The council. Mr. Allen, would you like us to apologize? For those of you in attendance this evening, if you wish to speak during the citizens' comment period, please sign up to do so using the appropriate sign-in sheets in the back of the auditorium as you come in through those doors. Okay. Item three on the agenda is adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Do we want to postpone in consideration of Mr. Henderson's request?
I would make the motion to postpone consideration of Agenda 7. Name his absence.
And do I have a second to amend the agenda by postponing the item until October 25th? Item number seven until October 25th?
I'll second.
Okay. Right. Is there any discussion? Okay. All in favor of amending? Just amending the agenda. Yes. So all in favor of amending the agenda, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes four to zero. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
I will give that one.
Thank you, Dr. Hostetter. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries four to zero. Okay. Item four is matters from the Vice Mayor, and I have two retirements to recognize. So tonight, we're going to recognize and celebrate the service of Gary Cho. Gary has served the city of Waynesboro for 30 years as the information technology director. Gary has led us through remarkable change in those 30 years, not only from a technology standpoint, but from a human resource perspective as well. Gary is an outstanding leader evidenced by amazing talent that he has had on his team, both past and present. Gary has perfected creating an inclusive, motivating, and results-driven culture within the IT department that serves as an inspiration to us all. And staff would like to thank Gary for his dedication and countless contributions to the city. We wish him well in his retirement, and staff asks that you stop by and say hello from time to time because you will be greatly missed. And next, we would also like to recognize Mr. Jim Shaw, our deputy city manager, on this occasion of his retirement. This is Jim's last council meeting as he completes a career of 25 years of service to the community. Jim has done an exceptional work as the deputy city manager for the last 13 years. Jim has made significant contributions to impactful projects too numerous to list here tonight, but some of the highlights include the Greenway, three historic districts, projects in the community, and economic development. Jim has played a large role in municipal budget development. His knowledge of local government is broad and deep. His steadying presence and expertise will be missed. And we wish Jim and his wife Jane only the very best in the coming years. Thank you, Jim, and congratulations on an exceptional career. And I would just like to add Wayne has been blessed to have both of you for your many years of service. And while I can't help feel a little sad at your departure, I wish you both a happy, relaxing retirement, away from work and deadlines. Enjoy Monday morning knowing you have served Waynesboro well. And item five is matters from council.
Madam Vice Mayor, I would just offer that Mayor and I attended the Virginia Municipal League Conference last week. It was well-attended, and it was nice to meet in person. Social distancing I like, but it was an informative and, I think, inspiring workshop. This year, I served as the chair for the Human Development and Education Committee and also on the Legislative Committee, where we worked to identify legislative priorities for all cities and towns that are members within the Virginia Municipal League, of which that's 99% of all town and cities. And that capacity advocated not just for Virginians, but more specifically for our spare city and our region with regards to regional jail, inmate incarceration, per capita reimbursement by the state for state incarcerated prisoners, as well as mental health initiatives and state participation in K-12 education. So I would offer those up in the upcoming week or so. We'll share our final adopted legislative program with my colleagues. And I thought it might be helpful to talk to the mayor about this as well of scheduling a brief work session maybe before council meeting to kind of talk about our upcoming legislative session for our members that represent us in Richmond so that we can identify our legislative program for Waynesboro and communicate that to our legislators.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Anyone else?
I'm going to go back to COVID update. Again, if you've been watching the numbers, it looks like we may have turned the corner on the increase that we saw in August into September. There seem to be some anomalies in the data just locally. One day, the stamp had negative numbers, and we had a huge increase in our numbers. My suspicion is that they reclassified prior patients because of my wrong address or something like that. But otherwise, we also see the third quarter in the broader state of Waynesboro, Augusta region, we seem to be coming down in our new cases. But we're not done. We're not down where we were in June yet. So we still have to be vigilant. Vaccine rates continue to go back up. We see more vaccines given. I've had conversations with patients, and I think people have had good conversations, saying, you know, yeah, I've had questions, and I haven't gotten a good source to answer. So I encourage everyone, if you do have questions, talk to your healthcare professionals and see if they can reassure you about some of the concerns you might have. Because that is the way to get our numbers under control and get things back. So as I said, good news in terms of the overall numbers, but we still have a ways to go to get our vaccination rates up above 70%, 75%. Which I think is our first goal. Getting it even higher would be great. So I'll give you those.
Thank you, Dr. Hostetter. Anyone else? Okay. So item six is approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that one.
Thank you, Dr. Hostetter. Is there a second?
I'll free.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. That motion carries four to zero. Item seven has been moved to the October 25th meeting, and so we'll move on to item eight. And that's to consider adopting a resolution in support of a Virginia Economic Development Partnership Business Ready Sites Program grant. And I'm going to call on Mr. Henson.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor and members of the council. We're here tonight, as indicated in your briefing material, to get your support for an application for a $5.3 million grant for infrastructure construction on the Nature's Crossing Technology Zone industrial park. As you may recall, when the council purchased this property in 2012, the goal was to create an industrial park. A little bit later after that, the city applied board received a VDOT smart-scale grant that creates the Southern Corridor Road, which is a connector road between Exit 94 and Exit 96, and also serves as the main access road for the Nature's Crossing Technology Zone Park. So the goal is to become a Tier Four industrial site at the time that that road is completed, which is currently scheduled for early of 2025. The state uses a ranking system for industrial sites, and I'll spare you all the gritty details of that, but it goes from zero to five. Zero is bad. Five is exceptional. And Tier Four is a very easily marketable site. So that is our goal at this point. So why is that important? CNBC has ranked Virginia as a top state for business in the last two rankings. Colliers International, a global real estate firm, has identified the Shenandoah Valley as one of the top 10 emerging markets in the country. We are seeing investment projects up. While I can't say it's a record year, it has to be close for the number of requests for information and proposals that we have received either at the state or regional or local level. We in Waynesboro unfortunately have limited opportunity to respond to those requests for information as we only have one greenfield site larger than 50 acres. It is privately held, and it is currently a Tier Two site. We're working with the owner of that property to move its ranking up so that we can have some additional opportunity. But at this point, we still only have one greenfield site that we can participate with. You may have seen in the press, the valley has two recent wins during the month of September, which indicates to us that the world is paying attention to the Shenandoah Valley, that these two food and beverage companies locate here, build new facilities here in the valley. And we want to be able to participate in future opportunities like that. The next steps for us is the construction of water and sewer infrastructure in the industrial park. And again, we want to build these simultaneously with the Southern Corridor Road, which means construction bids to go out in fiscal '23 and construction in fiscal '24 to be completed by early of calendar 2025. The grant that we're talking about tonight is a state grant. It's a Virginia Economic Development Partnership Business Ready Sites Program grant. It's a three-to-one match program, meaning the city puts in 25% and the state puts in 75%. The application is due this Friday, hence our opportunity tonight to discuss this. And we are planning to apply for the maximum amount. If you look at the dark line at the bottom, that's the total project, roughly $7.2 million. That's a water tank on-site, which is roughly half an amount, and water and wastewater infrastructure, which is roughly 25% each of that amount. This, again, simultaneously built parallel to the road as the road is going in. Requesting a grant of $5.3 million. The city match, again, was 25%. But in this particular grant, they are allowing us to capture expenses within the past five years to count towards that match. Hence, our request tonight is your support of a letter and a resolution indicating to go with the grant application that the city is prepared, should we get the grant, to match that of $760,000 up to $760,225. Happy to address any questions now.
Some of you, you said we could use money we already spare? We have a debt amount?
Yes, up to that. Within the past five years, including our commitment to the Southern Corridor, to that portion of the Southern Corridor Road, is $1.4 million. So the $1.4 plus the 700 equals the 1.8, which is 25% of the match.
Just approximately, what's our remaining balance to fund the pad development of the parcel after water sewers? What would the city's contribution look like participating in that?
Total or additional beyond after-water sewers in place? So after-water and sewers in place, we would be considered a Tier Four site with our planned off-site capabilities. I would not recommending grading, which would be a pad-ready site, which would take us to a Tier Five for a couple of reasons. One, that is a huge number. Number two is we're not subdividing these lots. We're keeping them as one big parcel. So we'd be kind of guessing as to what we needed to be pad-ready. So that's not part of our equation at this point.
But beyond, to get to raise it to a pad-ready site, assuming no additional grants are identified, do you have a ballpark of what the city responsibility would be for development beyond water sewer?
So again, if we were going to do that, the initial estimate was $10 million to make the entire thing pad-ready?
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution? Thank you. Mr. Allen, is there a second?
I will start it.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hostetter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay. That motion and that resolution passes three to one. So item nine is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating 9,108 from the victim-witness restrictors and donations to the victim-witness program in the general fund. And I'm going to call on Mr. McCormick to give us more information.
Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor and members of council. Item nine is to consider appropriation ordinance appropriating fund balances, restricted fund balances from this full year 2021, and some donations to the victim-witness program for use in the victim-witness program. These ordinance can be introduced, seconded, and discussed this evening and then be put forward for consideration as your October 25th.
Are there any questions from Mr. McCormick? Do I have a motion to introduce?
No motion.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. And you'll have a second?
I'll try.
Okay. Any discussion? Any?
The victim-witness program is a program within the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office where we have a specialist that works with Kristen Crummett, that works with victims of crimes that are witnesses. And she gets supplies, or not supplies, sorry, monetary donations on occasion to help her with supplies and things like that. And that's where these are from.
Any other discussion? This ordinance will receive final consideration at the October 25th regular meeting. Okay. Item 10 is to consider introducing and adopting the following appropriation ordinances, A through E. And I'm going to call Mr. McCormick to provide additional information on items A through E.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Items A through E are for the receipt of funds during the current fiscal years of fiscal year 2022. It varies from grant revenue for safer routes to school in the amount of $23,600, $1,281 of revenue received by the Parks and Rec Department for general supplies on the agriculture side, $3,000 of grant revenue for subleasing 110 North Lane Avenue, $1,176 of reimbursements received by the police department, and $410 of revenue from the sale of scrap within the water fund. These items can be introduced, seconded, discussed, and adopted this evening if council chooses.
Okay. Do we have any questions for Mr. McCormick?
I would just ask if we could break out 10A for standard consideration. I'll have to abstain from that.
Okay. So we, which one, 10A?
Yes.
Okay. So is there a motion to adopt the appropriation ordinances, B through E?
I'll make it.
Okay. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that carries four to zero. And then we will pass to, is there a motion to adopt the appropriation ordinance for item A? Thank you, Mr. Allen. Do I have a second? Thank you, Dr. Hostetter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And who wants to? Okay. So that motion passes. Three and one is staying. So that moves us to 11 Communication Correspondents and Councilmen. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Van.
Yes, ma'am. I have one item for information purposes this evening. Simply want to make the council aware of some intentions regarding Phase 2B of the Greenway Trail. In October of 2011, nearly a decade ago, the council adopted a resolution to enter into an agreement with the Virginia Department of Transportation to fund construction of the Greenway Trail Phase 2B. And that's the portion of the trail essentially from behind Shiloh Baptist Church north to North Park. As part of that resolution, the city agreed to fund at a minimum 20% of the total project cost as match. And at that time, the project was estimated to be $600,000. In the 10 years that have passed since that original resolution, the project cost estimates have gone up by about $112,000. VDOT has asked the city to confirm its commitment to cover those costs and the original match. And I simply want to alert the council to my intention of furnishing that confirmation to VDOT. Again, this is a key stretch, key segment of the trail as we originally conceived of the network. And folks in the council included were very excited about the prospect of connecting to North Park. So it's my assumption that we want to do that. Mr. McCormick has identified sufficient funds in the capital improvement plan by which we could cover that commitment. And unless I hear objections or concerns this evening, we intend to confirm to VDOT that we'll cover and move forward with the project.
So if I'm hearing you right, then you're saying the original 20% cost is...
That's correct. It's what VDOT refers to as a limited contribution plan or limited funded project, which means that your commitment is the 20% match plus the entirety of project overages.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Van. Item 12 is citizens' comment period. Before we begin, I would like to remind speakers to state your name and address for our record. You will be given four minutes to address council. We typically have a light system tonight, but we don't have that. So Mr. Shaw will let, make us aware when your four minutes is up. And we just ask that you address council as a whole. And we're here to listen tonight and not to respond to any direct questions. Mr. Van.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Leslie Lester.
Where should I go? I'm here tonight to address the council about an increasing problem that we have in Waynesboro.
I'm sorry. Could you speak up a little bit and state your name and address for the record?
Oh, sure. My name's Leslie Lester, and I reside at 224 Buckford Road, Waynesboro, Virginia.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I'm here to represent the 64th Social Club. That's on East Broad Street. And we are seeing an increasing amount of homeless people who don't necessarily qualify for, like, warm or valued services. Last year, when I would go in to work, they would be sleeping outside in front of the laundromat because it helped them keep warm. We also have a place nearby the complex that's referred to as Tent City. Guys, I've seen an increasing amount of new faces over the last few weeks. And where it's raining, where there's bad weather, especially extreme cold or hot, they kind of want to linger in that complex. So it's getting worse as I'm observing. And we, you know, try to talk to them and offer them, you know, valued services and direct them to warm. But unfortunately, like I've stated before, we have a large amount of people around here that aren't necessarily qualified for those services. And as an end result, as, you know, business people, especially on that complex with the new doo-pot there and actually furniture and stuff, we want business to, you know, thrive and succeed on Broad Street to the east side part. So that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Larry Skillman?
I'm Larry Skillman. My address is 3212 East Side Highway, Groddens, Virginia. I'm representing Riverside Properties, who owns the Riverside Shopping Center at 141 East Broad Street. I'm also representing Jackson York Tax Service, which is one of the offices in the strip mall. I hope all of you have received the pictures that we have submitted in advance for you to look over. If you take the time to look at those, you also notice that we've got quite a problem on the property and a problem with the businesses that are there, as the young lady just spoke. As a property owner and landlord, our concern first and foremost is for the safety of our tenants, their employees, and their customers. Secondly, it's very difficult, if not impossible, to keep a store ready for business when you're constantly cleaning up piles and piles of trash left outside your door, discarded clothing, and we're talking buggies full of discarded clothing, food scraps, drug paraphernalia, and even in two cases, feces that was left by people other than customers of our stores. And I do know of three stores who have had to or want to lock their doors during business hours in order to feel safe and have the customers literally come in and call them when they get to the door to bring them in. My wife, who works for the tax office and is one of our partners, when she confronted one woman on the sidewalk, the lady told her, said she better watch her back. She knew where she worked and what time she got off. And let me tell you, nobody, nobody deserves to be treated or threatened like that by anyone. I have been personally threatened more times than I can even begin to tell you. And I know most of those were probably idle threats. But there are some angry people that come down there, and they have nothing or very little to lose, especially when it's dark down there. We had our office actually locked, filled up with super glue. We had to pay someone to come in and drill out the lock so we could open up for business. We know that plenty of drug deals go down on the parking lot. We know of personal prostitution that's taking place on that lot. Just this afternoon, we received pictures of three police officers' cars and first aid crew building, I mean, emergency crew there. I don't know what that one was for, but I do know that that was not an isolated incident. And I can assure you of that. I would like to ask you one question before my time is up. If this were going on at your business, if you have a business, or if it's going on at a business where you send your family or your children, would you stand for that? And the answer probably is no. Most likely, you would feel like going somewhere else where you felt safe and welcome. And I'm pretty sure, pretty sure that it's not tolerated in or around any of the local government buildings, the stuff you saw in those pictures. You said we're not receiving any questions or comments back, but I'll entertain them at some point if you need to contact me about the pictures what you saw. Just to wrap up, I guess what we're asking from council is to help enforce through the police department existing ordinances and laws to have people who are disrupting business, trespassing, and preventing customers from literally entering because of threats, whether they're real or even perceived, such as lying in front of the buildings or on the sidewalks, gathering in groups that look pretty menacing, especially to women. I would ask you to be able to work with the police department and kind of encourage that, to take a better stance of that. And if there is no such ordinance on the books, which I feel sure there's something there, that you'd work with legal counsel to create something that would work. And I do understand that everybody has rights, everybody. That includes the business owners as well as the property owners. And that goes both ways. And I would just simply ask you to consider what we presented here tonight with somebody. And I was going to thank you with that last sentence. Thank you, Mr. Shaw, and thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Jessica Hall?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of city council. My name is Jessica Hall. I live at 1605 East Street, Karen.
Did you bring your microphone?
I manage CNC sensations. Every morning, one of my employees has to clean the homeless mess around that they leave overnight. Trash will be scattered all over the parking lot, clothes, shoes, boxes, et cetera, spread out everywhere. We've had cracked pipes, human feces at our dumpster that guys will stand out in the open and urinate. Recently, when we arrived to the shop, the entire front was smelling strong as urine. In broad daylight, multiple suspicious meetings are always taking place in the parking lot. I'm losing walk-in customers because they do not feel comfortable walking in our shop because they are always loitering, and the front are sitting down at the end of the sidewalk next to the dumpster. Multiple times as I arrive in mornings, I find multiple persons that have slept through the night, and when you ask them to leave, they are rude and disrespectful. They've asked myself, my customers, my employees for money. My employees and I do not feel safe walking out in the daylight or at nighttime when we have to stay late working on holidays. We've asked the police department if they can do drive-throughs in the parking lot multiple times a day and night, and they reply is if they have extra time to do so. There was a young gentleman that is homeless. I can provide his name if you please. Him and his girlfriend daily fight verbally, physically. They're always screaming curse words at one another. He has yet been removed or taken in by the police for his constant actions. Myself, my employees, along with two ladies from the Valley Mission, witnessed this young man beating another homeless girl in the head multiple times so bad she was screaming at me to call for help, but with no surprise, the officers did nothing to him. They tell me, since they are not family members or in a relationship, they cannot arrest him, so I assume simple assault out in public with 10 witnesses isn't a crime anymore in the eyes of the law. I asked the officer that day, what is it going to take for them to do their job? Is it for one of them to die, and then maybe somebody will finally do something to help? I say this in the most respectful manner, in no way trying to be disrespectful, but if they were loitering and doing everything they do at our complex in front of the police department or any city buildings, they would have already had them removed and made sure it didn't continue. So I'm here tonight presenting some of the issues with hope that the city can find resolution. Thank you, and I appreciate your time and concern.
Thank you.
Ms. Natasha Johnson?
I think she's 300, 300 and she's called.
Thank you. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to.
Thank you, Mr. Allen, and one second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.